Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Oklahoma City Council Meeting. The meeting is called to order, and I'd like to ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
All council members are present.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a brief moment of silence afterwards?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The city clerk posted orders of adjournment of the June 10, 2025 meeting, and the agenda of the June 24, 2025 meeting in accordance with state law, city council housing authority policy. There are no presentations on today's agenda. Thank you. Okay, staff, I think you have a couple of agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, we'd recommend that we take Agenda Item 21, which is the closed session, and we have that considered after consent calendar and public comment. And then we would also recommend that we move Agenda Item Number 10, which is the consideration of the SAFER grant. If we move that ahead of Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the budget, because there's some budget ramifications to that decision that will help guide us in the budget discussion. So that would be my recommended changes.
Council, do you have any changes? All right. I'd like to make a motion then to approve those agenda changes.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
We are at Consent Items. Consent Items are routine matters enacted by one motion according to the recommendation listed below. With concurrence of the city council, a council member or person in attendance may request discussion of a consent item at this time. Council members, do you wish to pull any of the consent items? Staff?
No, sir.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items.
Sir, I apologize. We do have a speaker for consent item.
Thanks for telling me.
For item number six is Mr. Ruben Claudio.
Hello, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'm coming to speak to you about item number six, which is bid 005-260 ADA Concrete Improvements. We were a bidder on this contract, and we were in second place. But a critical aspect of this contract was that it was funded by the Community Development Block Grant, which is also called Section Three. And you had to fill out the questionnaire for Section Three, a critical aspect of this bid. And the low bidder did not fill out this form questionnaire correctly. So there's four questions on this questionnaire. And you're supposed to answer yes or no to questions one through three, and then yes or no if you've provided a qualitative efforts plan. And the literal sentence that it reads here, well, prior to that, the low bidder sale construction answered no to question one, no to question two, no to question three, no to providing a qualitative efforts plan. And then the sentence that follows that says, if you did not answer yes to questions one to three and did not submit a clear and concise qualitative efforts plan, your bid will be deemed non-responsive. So that's where it should end, because they didn't meet the requirement of Section Three. We've been waiting, once the bid was actually submitted, we were waiting for several weeks while there was a determination of responsiveness of the bidders. And we were notified on June 12 of that bid, all the bidders were, there was a letter that went out saying there was a notice of intent to award to sale construction. And we submitted our protest on the day of receipt of that letter, because we couldn't believe that the low bidder was deemed responsive when they filled out Section Three incorrectly. So then we got an explanation of it. And this was provided to us by the city staff. It says here, the low bidder was notified on May 21, their bid was non-responsive. And then SEC responded by saying they made an error in their bids supplemental. But how could they respond to that if every other bidder filled it out correctly and wasn't even notified of a non-responsive bidder? We weren't able to even protest it at that time. We only protested the day that we received notice of intent to award. So then in the city's letter to me, it said our protest was untimely and without merit. But we're not certain how it could be deemed untimely if we respond to the day that we received a letter of notice of intent to award. When we, there was nothing to protest prior to that, because there was no responsive bidder, there was no determination of what a responsive bidder was. So we're pretty frustrated with the process here, because we filled out our Section Three correctly. It was a critical aspect, because it's the funding of this project. The low bidder filled it out incorrectly. They should have been deemed non-responsive. There was no remedy inside of that bid for all the other bidders. Everybody else took into consideration either having their staff meet the requirement it, and all of a sudden their bid was much lower than it should have been, theoretically, that's the low bid, and we can hold them to that. They don't have a chance to go back and change that, because that would put them at an unfair financial advantage. In this case, there's not a financial advantage, but there is an opportunity to go back, sign a document, relabel things, put in the right number if it's not substantial to the bid process.
I guess my question...
Can I respond to a couple?
I'll bring it in in a second. We'll just do it.
I guess my question is, before the deadline, does somebody have the ability to say, "Will you check my work?"
We can't check their work, but someone, if they submit a sealed bid, and they can submit a new bid before the deadline, for sure. They can submit a revised bid, but we don't go through and sort of do a check and say, "Oh, you missed this, you missed that, your math doesn't add up."
Or this will disqualify you, or, because that would give somebody an unfair advantage, potentially, if we said, "Oh, we'll help correct your mistake."
Correct.
But the other people did it right, so we're actually giving somebody an unfair advantage if we correct a mistake.
Correct. We found the mistake, or when we found, when we declared them unresponsive, because they didn't fill it out correctly, when they got that notice, they said, "Oh, my goodness, I filled it out wrong. Let me correct that." So that was the process. It was after the bid was opened.
My question now is, your early example was last November, Rack Construction had a similar situation that we were able to correct after the fact, because it was deemed immaterial to the overall bid. Is that, am I hearing that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So I can speak to a couple of points. The bid last November was much different in the sense that, or in the fact that, the city deemed my bid non-responsive for the signature. And I had to prove to the city that it was immaterial, because we brought case law to show you that the bidder's bond, which is what the reason was that it wasn't signed, was actually secured. And it was a bond that secured my bid. So it was immaterial to the fact that no bidder got an advantage, because all the bids are secured. I'm supposed to sign that bid bond. There's no question about that. We acknowledge that. But it did not provide me an advantage, and the city deemed my bid non-responsive. So I had to respond to the bid, to the city deeming my bid non-responsive. Whereas, and that was sent out to all the bidders, that I was non-responsive. Whereas, in this case, SEC was notified solely that they were non-responsive and given an opportunity to remedy that, which is a completely different situation. Number one. Number two, Section 3 is not immaterial. It's literally critical to the funding of this project. It's not a secure bidder's bond. It's a completely different element of the whole bid. And not all the bidders, every bidder bid, taking Section 3 into consideration, outreach, marketing, you know, training, what have you. So there's a cost associated with that. So I don't understand why I'm here to talk, and forgive my, you know...
That's okay. You have...
...motion, and just I'm passionate about it.
It's, understand it.
But I feel that I'm being treated, I hate the fact that I have to come sit in front of you guys again, because my name was already put here before, because I had to fight for the last one, because it was an immaterial one. And then in this case, where it should have been deemed non-responsive, but the same process doesn't appear to have been followed. Like, in the city's response here, their bid was non-responsive. At that point, the letter should have gone out to all the bidders, like it did the first time my bid worked for you guys. And then, sure, SEC could file their protest about why they shouldn't be deemed non-responsive.
I appreciate that. I want to ask our attorney. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I actually have been involved in contracts like this for the last 25 years as your city attorney. And we have instructions in our requests for bids. The instructions are clear. Every bidder must sign the bid bond, in this case, the Rack Corporation should be notarized, and every surety signs the bid bond. The reason for that is because we want the bidder to be as responsible on the bid as the surety. And we have instructions at that section, and we did for the November bid. Failure to sign the bid bond can be grounds for being non-responsive. That's why he was deemed non-responsive. In this case, the same instruction is found on the Section 3 questionnaire. Now, bid bond costs money, and whether they make it up with a discount on the actual bid or performance and labor material bonds, it's irrelevant. Every bidder has to obtain a bid bond from their surety. In Mr. Claudio's case, yes, they presented some argument as to whether that was appropriate, whether his signature was required. And we deemed that even though we required it, the state has, Department of Insurance has found that for state projects, it's not necessary. So we provide an exception to him that we will now provide to everybody, even though our instructions will always say, "The bidder must sign the bid bond." In this case, the questionnaire wasn't completed correctly. When we told, when staff was told of this, they made the correction. There was no change in price, and there was, we deemed, there was no advantage given to the low bidder in this case, and that's why the recommendation was made. Again, our instructions are in our documents, not CDBG's documents. CDBG does not say you must be a Section 3 contractor before you bid or when you bid on this project. They leave it up to us, and we have determined that as long as they are a Section 3 contractor, and they are, that they are entitled to be awarded the bid.
But I take exception to this statement that he filled it out incorrectly. He filled it out.
I think we've gone over this. Is there any point that you think...
No, but that's my point, is he filled it out, and then the city's saying, "Well, you filled it out incorrectly."
Yeah.
Like, I don't understand how that's, like, how is that possible for the city to make the determination that he filled it out incorrectly?
Well, if you want to respond to that, Graham, but...
Like, if I check the boxes on something, then why wouldn't I get the question, like, "Your number was not the low one"?
Well, I'd rather defer to an expert, but in a pretty short time, we're going to have to vote on this.
I understand, but that statement is troublesome to me.
The council wants us to reject the bid. We'll start rejecting all bids that aren't correct. And I can tell you, we get in every bid, practically every bid, I can't say for certainty every bid, on a public works project, we get at least one bidder who doesn't read the directions properly and fill out the forms correctly. And sometimes it's immaterial, sometimes it's material. So...
We have, and we have asked to not be slaves to form over function, and to be a smooth organization that moves forward. So, thank you, sir. What I'm going to do is I'm going to, we're going to vote on...
I just wanted to be able to speak to everybody.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate it. What I'm going to do is just, I'm going to bring it up to the council. We're going to vote on this particular item, and then we'll move on.
Okay.
But thank you for coming, and I'm sorry...
Appreciate it. We enjoy working for the city. The city's great.
Okay. I'm sorry, this is frustrating, but I understand business.
Thank you.
All right. So, do you want to reject the bid? Does anybody want to reject the bid or make the case for that or make a motion to that? Nobody wants to make a motion? Okay. So then, I'm just going to vote on this item to approve it as it stands. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. Now, we have no more speaker cards, right?
No more speaker cards.
All right. I'll make a motion then to approve the rest of the consent items.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Graham, do you need us to bring up your closed session before public comment, or do you want to do it?
I think we need public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. Public, yes.
Yes?
We need public comment first.
Okay. We're now at public comment. At this time, any person may address a matter within the jurisdiction of the City Council, Housing Authority, Successor Agency to the Elkhorn Redevelopment Agency that is not on the agenda. Comments relating to items on today's agenda are already taken at the time that the item is heard. State law prohibits discussion or action on items not on the agenda. However, City Council and Housing Authority members may briefly respond to statements or questions, and an item may be placed on a future agenda. Angela, do you have any speaker cards for public comment?
We have one from Brenda Hammond.
Okay. Hey, Brenda?
Hi. How are you?
I'm good. How are you, Brenda?
I'm angry again.
Okay. I'm ready.
Not at you. Anger is not a mental illness. Anger is a normal human reaction to harassment, especially when it's purposely done. Sometimes I think people like to make others angry, because they like to watch the reaction. And you know what else? Those agitators just love to hear others drop the F-bomb, because they're too afraid to. And they want to drop, they want to drop the F-bomb themselves, but they are too chicken to. Well, they are afraid that their so-called friends, what they will think. Well, I'm not afraid to drop the F-bomb, especially when it's purposely provoked. Thank you, President Trump, for being yourself. I hear we're on heightened alert. Are you surprised? I'm not. This has happened in every war and conflict there's ever been, so I'm not paranoid about it. What I don't like is the piggyback idiots that are going to come, and they're going to take advantage of every opportunity to get their message out. Oh, they love to cause havoc, and then turn around and say, "Oh, can we help you?", all for money and job security. Speaking of which, I was recently approached by the county twice in the past two weeks. They want to, they want to ask me if I want to go to a safe parking lot. I said, "Where have you been for the past 16 years that no one's asked me from the county to be safe?" And I, my thing is, if there's retaliation, you know what's going on in the Middle East, if there's retaliation, why would I want to go to that parking lot run by that group if there's going to be retaliation? Just saying. Okay. So. Dropping the F-bomb is not against the law. What's against the law is when people mess with people, so they drop the F-bomb. I'm just going to drop the F-bomb, but some, you know, someone else is going to get hurt because they want to do more than drop the F-bomb. I love you, Trump. Later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Is that the last one?
No other speaker cards, sir.
Okay. Then I think that we will jump ahead and go to closed session. Let me see. I'd like to ask the city attorney, no, yeah. City Attorney, would you recite the title and lead us to the closed session?
Thank you, I will. The City Council is going to meet in closed session for a conference with its legal counsel on anticipated litigation. There's a significant exposure of litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 5495, 6.9, with one potential case. The description of the significant exposure is as stated on the agenda, and I'll paraphrase that Mr. James Moore alleged that a city employee posted a video of him on his website inappropriately. Thank you.
All right. Make a motion then during the closed session?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back very soon to conclude the meeting.
Well, they are afraid that their so-called friends, what they will think. Well, I'm not afraid to drop the F-bomb, especially when somebody, when it's purposely provoked. Thank you, President Trump, for being yourself. I hear we're on heightened alert. Are you surprised? I'm not. This has happened in every war and conflict there's ever been, so I'm not paranoid about it. What I don't like is the piggyback idiots that are come, that are going to come, and they're gonna take advantage of every opportunity to get your, their message out. Oh, they love to cause havoc and then turn around and say, oh, can we help you? All for money and job security. Speaking of which, I was recently approached by the county twice in the past two weeks. They want to, they want to ask me if I want to go to a safe parking lot. I said, where have you been for the past 16 years that no one's asked me from the county to be safe? And I, I, my thing is, if there's retaliation, you know what's going on in the Middle East, if there's retaliation, why would I want to go to that parking lot run by that group if there's gonna be retaliation? Just saying. Okay, so. Dropping the F-bomb is not against the law. What's against the law is when people mess with people, so they drop the F-bomb. I'm just gonna drop the F-bomb, but some, you know, someone else is gonna get hurt because they want to do more than drop the F-bomb. I love you, Trump. Later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Is that the last one?
No other speaker cards, sir.
Okay, then I think that we will jump ahead and go to closed session. Let me see. I'd like to ask the city attorney, no, yeah. City Attorney, would you recite the title and lead us into the closed session?
Thank you, I will. The City Council is gonna meet in closed session for a conference with its legal counsel on anticipated litigation. There's a significant exposure of litigation pursuant to Paragraph 2 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 5495-6.9, with one potential case. The description of the significant exposure is as stated on the agenda, and I'll paraphrase that Mr. James Moore alleged that a city employee posted a video of him on his website inappropriately. Thank you.
All right, make a motion then during the closed session.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back very soon to conclude the meeting. And, of course, I am kind of confused as we're, let me figure, Steve, what item was that?
Why don't I give a report, Mr. Mayor, of the closed session? Item 11.
Yes, please, please do.
The City Council met in closed session on one item. It was a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation under Government Code, Section 5495-6.9 Diaz and David II, and gave direction to the city's attorneys involved.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I would suggest we've got a couple people from EDCO, and rather than make them wait through an hour's worth of budget and fire engine discussion, which would probably combined be at least an hour, I think item 11 is probably pretty short.
Yeah, let's, uh...
And they're great partners with us, I'm sorry, partners and collaborators with us, so respecting their time, maybe we can move...
Yeah, sure.
Item 11 up.
Item 11 is regarding illegal dumping near apartment complexes, and if staff is available to tell us about this, I'd appreciate it. Anyway, we threw you, threw you a curve there.
As you noted, I am joined by representatives from EDCO. Anthony and John here in the audience. Today, I'm here to give you an update on the council priority regarding reducing illegal dumping near apartment complexes. In January, whoops.
Go to the full screen here.
There you are. In January, the City Council developed its 2025 City Council Action Plan, which identified six priorities: city beautification, city infrastructure, economic development, homelessness, public safety, and miscellaneous items. As part of the city beautification priority, the City Council identified reducing illegal dumping near apartment complexes as a specific goal. To achieve this goal, the Public Works Department identified or established the following tasks: to identify the top 10 illegal dumps or dumping hotspots near apartment complexes; to collaborate with EDCO to develop marketing materials; to meet with the Southern California Rental Housing Association in order to discuss approaches and other successful programs or models in other communities; meet with onsite apartment management; reassess the hotspots, and then finally, to give, wrap back around and give you guys a final report on this. So, this map shows the original spots identified as hotspots, anecdotally by our staff. They prepared a list of locations that we should look at. So, this hotspot map kind of shows where those accounts are. And we actually visited 14 spots a day of, just based on additional properties that we noticed that need some attention, and so that's reflected in this map as well. This map shows the sanitation and debris requests received through the city's MyCivic app. It's worth noting that there is a general correlation between the illegal dumping noted by staff by apartment complexes and the sanitation and debris cleanup requests that we receive. So after identifying our target audience, if you will, we met with EDCO to develop marketing and outreach materials and kind of identify programs that they have that would help us curb illegal dumping. So, this flyer promotes the bulky item pickup purchase or program through EDCO. So this flyer promotes the bulky item pickup purchase or program through EDCO. Generally, that's the type of illegal dumping that we see. Also has some information about hazardous, household hazardous waste. But essentially, this flyer promotes the program or EDCO services, which allows for four free bulky item pickups each year for each unit at each apartment complex. So that's a lot of free trash pickup services available. Once we had these materials developed, on May 27th, we actually went out and did site visits, conducted by city staff and EDCO, to provide property managers with educational flyers and guidance to curb illegal dumping. So during the site visits, three apartment managers indicated that they were already using the EDCO's bulky item pickup program. Nine apartment managers were provided with some flyers and guidance. At one location, residents shared that they observed non-apartment residents illegally dumping by their property. And then at another property, staff needed to engage code compliance, given the condition of the private property. And here's some pictures of that property. There's actually another picture. That's another picture of the property on the, on the street side. So overall, I think that the Public Works Department did a great job in doing outreach and education with our community, and we feel that there's been some positive impacts already. So going forward, our plan is to incorporate education and outreach in our approach to addressing illegal dumping. So whenever we see illegal dumping, we'll leave a flyer with the apartment complex manager, hopefully get a conversation with them, schedule a meeting, do some follow-up phone calls. And so we also plan to continue evaluating the impacts of this outreach by monitoring service requests and participation in EDCO's bulky item pickup program. So that concludes my formal presentation. Any questions for myself or EDCO?
Michelle, go ahead.
Question. The information that's being given out either by the city or by EDCO, is that done in several languages?
In its current form, it's not. It could be something we could consider going forward.
I, given the hotspots and where they're located and where the, a high number of recent immigrants locate, I think that that might be a prudent way to go. I know personally that I have stopped someone from dumping a sofa, and I don't know if he understood English all that well. He just knew the word "police" and my phone, and he loaded it back up into his van. And of course, I was yelling at him too, so a yelling woman at any guy is probably going to scare him off. But that would be a suggestion is to have it done in several languages. Just in case the apartment managers don't do it, I think sometimes, and I'm just guessing, that sometimes people are dumping at apartment complexes just because they already see stuff there, so they're going to dump it. I know on my street, there are a lot of people who put stuff out for free. And yes, after a couple of weeks, it might be gone, or the couches are dismantled for their foam material, and the disassembled couch is left there. So it's not just apartments, but yes, it is, it's prevalent throughout the city. So, thank you.
Great feedback. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate the presentation. This is amazing. It's kind of a similar, it's in the same vein, but not apartment complexes. So I had a resident reach out to me, maybe, this is serendipitous, maybe like a month ago or three weeks ago, where it's Luke Lane and, Luke Lane and Broadway, there's a private alley that Luke Lane and I think Broadway shares. And so Luke Lane and Broadway are in the city, but that alley is privately owned. And so I don't think the city or EDCO would go to the private alley, or would they? To pick that up, if it's, if the residents, if the residents of EDCO within the city, would that still count? Would they still be eligible to pick, pick up those bulky items?
From a multifamily?
No, it's a single family, and what I, what's happening is, there's just, the alley is strewn with bulky items, and the resident is suspicious that he thinks it's the actual residents who are putting it back in the alley, and not someone just coming and lining the alley. And so I don't, maybe this is an off, this is, maybe this is a side conversation, a sidebar conversation, but something to, to think about. Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, we can follow up on that. I suspect there's probably some, some options. All this, this program was targeted at apartment complexes.
Yeah.
So that was kind of our focus.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you.
We could look at that. I've written down that location, so.
We'll go down the line, Steve.
Oh. Boy, you've both done a great job with this. This is, it beautifies the city. It's a council goal. It's something we all recognize. You've got some great materials to give to the apartment managers. It's really, and you have a plan going forward. This was really a job well done.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank EDCO for being such a great corporate citizen. I mean, I'm really happy with the service that I get. And when there's a bulk item pickup, they're right there, and off it goes. But my, my question was, are these mostly sofas and mattresses? What kind of stuff is it, were we talking about?
I mean, you can see from the, from the site visit we did, this is private property stuff, but this isn't a right of way. We see this every day. I don't have the exact metrics, but our staff picks up tons and tons and tons of debris off our streets every year. And so, I mean, this is, you know, barbecue or car door, a couch, and sectional looks like. So you can see there's a bunch of different types of items that we pick up.
And then, could we put, could we ask the apartments, maybe, to, the ones that are really causing the problems, the hotspots? If they could put up a sign, actually, somewhere that most of their tenants would see in maybe three or four languages, that would tell them, you know, "Don't do this." And maybe, is there any kind of fine, Morgan, that if someone just dumped stuff out in the public right of way?
Well, yeah, there is, but we have to be able to locate the person. You know, if you remember Alice's restaurant, Arlo Guthrie got caught because he had an envelope underneath one half ton of garbage at the bottom of the hill. It's sort of like what we're dealing with here. We may not get that envelope that has the name of the person that dumped it.
But, but even a warning of a, whatever, $100 fine or whatever it is, you know, might get their attention. They might think, "Well, I better not do that." And then, how many large or bulky item pickups are there allowed in a apartment complex?
Four per year, per unit, per apartment complex.
Oh, so there's no reason.
Yeah, if you had 100, 400 a year.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot. And so there's no reason for someone just to dump that stuff. All it takes is one phone call, and maybe we could put the, they could put the EDCO phone number on there. So for bulky item pickups, you know, avoid $100 fine, and call EDCO to pick this up for free. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Any speaker cards on the side?
No speaker card, sir.
All right, back to council. Just looking to receive the report. Anyone who'd like to make a message, a motion?
Motion to receive the report?
Please, hon.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. So Graham, did you want to move item?
If we go to agenda 10 before nine, that'd be helpful.
Okay. This, this is a cognitive test for me, isn't it? See if I can handle it. All right. Okay. This is, wait, this is the SAFER grant?
Correct.
Okay, all right. We have four administrative reports on today's agenda. Item 10 is the consideration for a SAFER grant application. City Manager Graham Mitchell will tell us all about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We can get the presentation up. Thank you. So the, the purpose of this agenda item is to update the City Council on where we are with the SAFER grant. As you recall, the SAFER grant is a grant that allows us to help fund some of our fire personnel, the added fire personnel that, that we had discussed through several workshops. There are some budget implications related to this application. We thought it would be helpful to understand the City Council's direction when it comes to those budget ramifications. And, and we also want the council to go into this wide, eyes wide open. So with that, just for some background, we applied for the grant last year. As you know, we were not awarded. The current draft budget, which is part of the agenda packet, does fund three positions. As you recall, we're going to fund one-third of the nine personnel that's needed to operate Engine 208. And this budget anticipates funding three of those positions. The SAFER grant deadline is coming up next week. There are some changes this year in how the matching, or the, the grant matching requirements. They're asking for a match of 25% in years one and two, and then it kicks up to 65% in year three. And the, the grant only covers what's called base salary. So that, that ends up being about 71% of the total personnel costs. It does not include fuel and other equipment that's required for a fire engine as well. But that's, it's significant when I show you the numbers of how much we'll be applying for. So from a cost perspective, just so you understand, to operate a full Engine 208 personnel, equipment, et cetera, is about $2.55 million annually. Does not, that does not include a sinking fund to replace the fire engine. But just to operate annually for a full nine-person crew is about $2.5 million. Because the base salary is only covered by the SAFER grant, we did pull that out, that ends up being about $1.8 million per year. And then over the total three-year period, there'd be $5.4 million of base salary paid, not including the other expenditures, the, the, the benefits and other, other costs associated with running an engine. As we said before, the matching grant only covers the base salary, and the city will cover 100% of all the other elements related to operating Engine 208. So the staff report identifies three different options to consider. One is to apply for the entire nine-person staffing for the engine. That would cost the city, our person, our, our cost directly would be $4.5 million over the three-year period. The grant would pay for $3.2 million, so we would be paying more than half, but, but $3.2 million is a lot of money. Because the grant does not supplant personnel, having positions funded in the budget, in the current draft budget, should be pulled out if that's the option the City Council wants to take. Because once they're in the budget, they're actually positions that exist, and then they would no longer be eligible for the grant. And so if that's the option you take, then I will give some direction to the City Council when we get to adoption of the budget, how to pull those, those people out. The reason I say apply for eight to nine positions, we have made an offer to one of the individuals that are part of the three-person crew, and so we would need to see whether that's, they're an eligible person to apply for, or we may have already hired them, and they may not be eligible. That's why I've given a little bit of leeway between eight and nine, nine positions. The other option is to fund the three that you, that are currently funded in the budget that the City Council's been talking about for the last several months, and then to go after the grant and apply for the six additional positions. Again, that would cost overall, it would increase our total cost, because we're going to take, we're going to pay 100% of those three over the next three years, and we'd get less grant money. But again, $2.3 million is significant money. It does lower the grant share, but it also allows maybe us to hire a little bit more strategically, rather than all at one time. And perhaps it makes the grant application a little more competitive, because it's less money. And it also shows the city's commitment to already funding three positions, and the grant will help us get a fully functional Engine 208. The other option is to fund the three positions that are currently found in the draft budget, and then to not apply this year, kind of see where it goes, and think about applying for next year. I don't know, the only advantage of that would be, once you apply for the grant, under either scenario, you have committed some significant money to the general fund over the next three years. Not applying doesn't, it only, does not, does not lock you into those expenditures over the additional three years. So with that, staff's here to answer any questions that you have, get any feedback. But if we got some direction from the council, we can get a grant application in by the deadline and hopefully be competitive. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Graham. Gary?
So we're under notes where it says requires removing two to three positions from the fiscal year 26 budget.
Good. Those are proposed positions in the fire department.
Those would be the added positions that have been proposed on, by the council in the last couple of months.
Okay, so we wouldn't propose, we would take that out of the budget, and hopefully, we would get the grant money to, to restore those positions, or to put those positions back in.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, uh, I'm a big believer in public safety. That always comes number one for me. And I'd feel really bad if somebody died because we didn't have enough firefighters on duty. So I, I'm a, a little reluctant to take money that's in reserves, one-time money, and use it for ongoing salary expenses. But I think in this case, public safety is so important, I think that outweighs my reluctance. So I, I think that the option one is prudent and makes our citizens safer.
All right, Michelle?
I think so, Graham. Question. Didn't we agree to staff two-thirds or two out of the three shifts necessary?
No, just one-third.
Just one-third. I'm sorry. Okay, so one-third only. And that would be how many people?
That'd be three individuals. So there'd be a captain, a fire engineer, and a firefighter/paramedic.
Okay. Next question. When will we receive Engine 208?
So we have Engine 208. It's, it's available. It's ready to go. Just missing the people on it. So we, as you recall, we started the process of hiring the firefighter paramedics. The testing for engineers is coming up later this summer, early fall, and the testing for the captain is shortly thereafter.
Okay. And how long to get ready to deploy?
It'll take us, just from a staffing perspective, at least until November or December, to have the Engine 208 staffed with the one-third levels.
And if we apply for this grant, when would we find out notification?
Assuming the grant schedule is similar to that of last year, which it hasn't been thus far, but assuming it were, we would know towards the end of the calendar year. So around late November, early December. And as, as they dole out the money, there were some late stragglers that were even notified into early January.
So in essence, if we approve this today, we could have everything in place, deployed, everybody hired and deployed out, hoping that we get the grant?
No, if, if we apply for the grant under scenario one, use option one, we would hold off on any hiring until we got notice that the grant was received. Because if we were to start hiring before then, those individuals would no longer be eligible to be. were to start hiring before then, those individuals would no longer be eligible to be grant-paid for. So, everything would go on hold until we found out about the grant. If the, if option two is taken, we would continue to work toward the recruitment for the one-third of the engine company, which would be ongoing. And again, we'd probably get it filled around that November, early December time. And then, if we got the grant, then we would begin to recruit for the other additional six positions.
Okay. So, as far as benefits to the city, or to the residents, in your opinion, what would be the best option? As far as, we already have our engine, we've already started the recruitment process, we're going to apply for the grant, but we won't know until the end of the year. Can you tell me pros and cons, or what, what, let me rephrase that?
So, option one does slow down the overall implementation. So, engine, so option one would take longer to have at least one individual, or at least one crew working on the fire engine. It would delay it by a few months, but not, not significantly, but by a few months. It ends up, so I wouldn't even make that as a factor, to be honest with you. I think what it comes down to is, do you want to have something up and running right now, or sooner? And in exchange for that, you're willing to contribute more from the general fund to pay for that over the next three years? Or do you want to try to go for the entire thing? But you also have to run the risk of not being funded again, right? And so, if you're not funded again, then we're, we're not, we don't have the money, and we're months behind where we thought we were gonna be. So, those are kind of the pros and cons. It's, it's really a matter of how much future general fund does the city council want to allocate to Engine 208. That's what it comes down to.
The level of calls for service that 208 would be servicing, are they, are those numbers kind of pushing to get this staffed and out?
That's always been the issue. As you recall, Engine, or Station 8 is one of the busiest stations in the San Diego region. What we don't know, because we don't have a crystal ball, is, once that Engine 208 is deployed, are we responding to calls within the city of El Cajon? Or are we having Lakeside, San Miguel respond less to El Cajon? Or are we responding more to those other jurisdictions? We don't know that until we actually get going. But logically, we know that Engine 208 gets a lot of calls. We know that we, we receive more assistance from outside agencies than we give.
Right.
And so, it should provide a greater level of service to our own community, and help balance out that trade deficit that we currently have.
Right, right, right.
It still won't fix areas like, frankly, where you live, council member, because Engine 208 will still not be the closest engine station to you, right? Or engine to you. It'll still be-
San Miguel 19.
San Miguel, right? But it'll help cover those other areas that we currently are lacking coverage.
Right. And anybody can look at Pulse Point, and look at the map, and see, if you follow the different fire departments from the different cities, you can see where, where the calls are going. So, number two, in your opinion, would be the best option?
I don't have a preference. I think it comes down to an appetite for the council of how much general fund you want to commit over the next three years to Engine 208.
Okay, I'll let someone else ask questions.
Steve, please.
Thank you for giving us choices. I have a question before we get started on the options. The grant portion of 2.3 million on option two. In an earlier slide, you said it's for base salary only, and for nine firefighters, it'd be 1.8 million. So, I'm saying that's about $200,000 in pay. And that pays not just base salary. It's base salary plus the taxes, and, and it's not just pure-
Correct. And any educational incentives that are universal, some of those things.
Of course. Okay, so, I'm kinda saying, so, six positions at a base salary would be $200,000, times six positions would be 1.2 million per year that we would get from the grant. Times three years would be 3.6 million, if I did my math right. And when I see 2.3, I'm going, I think we're gonna get more money than 2.3 million. Do, is my math off?
I'm relying on the grant application. I don't know. There's a formula that goes into it. I don't have that math behind me.
Okay. I, option three, I don't like, because it just says, hey, we're not gonna apply for a grant. And that doesn't make sense to me when there's money out there. Option one is a risk for me, because we could say, no hiring, we're gonna wait till we hear if we got the grant. And that could be November or December, which means we do nothing with that engine that we have now. We do nothing until November, December. And if they say no, now we're really behind, because, well, now we gotta go out and hire three, or six, or whatever. So, option one, to me, was too much of a risk to wait, and then if it doesn't, we're done. Option two makes sense to me. I don't know about the numbers, but, but we could get that going sooner than later, with the three that comes out of our pocket. We can apply for the remaining six for the grant. If we get it, great. If we don't, we'll, we'll just go with the three till we find another solution. This makes sense to me, because you gotta get going. You can't steer a parked car. At some point, you have to start the engine and roll, and course correct from there, which is what option two is for me. In a sense, it, this thing is a pilot, a program with the three, saying, let's see if this reduces response times, as the goal is, versus waiting for others to come into our city. And how much are we going outside of the area to provide service to someone else? That is, what are the costs savings, and what response times are those two? For that reason, I'd say option two. Let's go with the three now, and let's roll the dice on getting six in four or five months, and go from there.
Gary, do you have any thoughts or questions?
Yeah. I like option one, 'cause the city cost is actually less than option two for those three years. And I understand Steve's concern about delaying getting more firefighters. But, boy, we'd get a really good return here if we'd go with number one. And that's, you know, that's my best choice. I, I wouldn't be super disappointed if we went with number two, but I think number one give us the biggest bang for the buck.
Phil?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to recognize, as a council, there's really no good options here. You know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to fill positions, and we'd have the budget for it. I'm extraordinarily nervous about pulling out of the general fund reserves. That seems more of a risk to me. Especially when we're going through the budget, and we are cutting across the board. Is that right? 5%-ish?
We are. We are cutting across the board. However, these are future expenditures into future years. I'm not saying that money's gonna fall from, from heavens, a $5.35 million. But, but you, you make decisions this year, and you'll have to figure out how to make that happen into future years, right? So, that, I thought it'd be important for the council, at least, to be aware of, two years from now, as we're making decisions, that you'll remember why we made this decision today, based on the conversation you had. So, that's, that's the hard part you're in.
And who knows if, I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know if, you know, the following years, we have to make even more cuts.
Could be great, could be horrible. Don't know.
Yeah. I, I feel like I'm leaning with number one, to mitigate the financial risk for the future. And, you know, I, I'm kinda looking at this, at this, you know, the grant is dictating our move, which is not a great plan, but it's really, in my respect, the only card we have is to staff up. And so, if we're gonna go for a grant, we might as well go all the way, and not half of it, is my thought. And then, and one of Labor's biggest things was, you know, we're willing to work with the city as best as possible, as long as there's some kind of vision and long-term goal. They're, they're willing to, to, to work with us. That was, it seemed like after the, the whole meeting in our summit workshop, it was, listen, we, we love working with the city. We want to be there for them. And the last thing that they said was, as long as there's some kind of vision for it. And I feel like if we're gonna go for the grant, we should go all the way, and I don't want to strap the city into more money in the future, given the uncertainty of the economy. And we're gonna then have to dig into, if we don't get the grant, we're gonna have to dig into savings more and more for an ongoing cost. And I was gonna say one other thing. I forgot. Oh, that's two, if we don't get the grant this time, so we've applied once, been denied, we're gonna apply a second time. If we don't get the grant after this second application, I've never applied for grants, this type of grant. What's your professional opinion of, do we base our strategy on getting grants moving forward?
I mean, a lot of people look at, oh, grants are the, they'll fix it all, right? Just apply for a grant. And that rarely is the answer.
Yeah.
In, in this case, and I know there's always a concern, you know, how many times you have to go to the well? But a lot of it depends on who else is applying. That's a big component of who's applying from year to year. So, if, if we don't get it, I would not dissuade us from applying again. However, if, if the grant didn't go in, the city council does always have the option to say, okay, we didn't get it. Let's fund the three that we've committed to funding already. You've already committed to doing that. You fund those, and then maybe having the, the six positions instead of the total nine positions, maybe it makes you a little more competitive.
Yeah, okay. Well, I feel like I'm leaning towards one. I wouldn't be extraordinarily disappointed with two, but I just, I'm, I don't like not maximizing the grant that we're applying for, and the, the higher cost.
Let me go and see if there's any public comment, that we can come back and discuss this a little bit more.
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Well, then we can come back and discuss this a little bit more. Yeah, Steve.
So, let's say that we did option two, and we say, you know, we'll try for six. Does that preclude us from the following year for applying for the final three? And I understand the grant means it can only be for new hires. So, let's say the original three that we start today, they move into attrition, or something else, and then the, the six plus three, the three are new hires. Is that possible?
As long as, as long as you're not, as long as the grant is not paying for a budgeted position that you already have. So, if you, if you bring on the three, frankly, and then let's say you bring on the two-thirds, right? Now you have two-thirds of a crew. You can apply for that third in, in a future year.
And this grant is for three years, so in the fourth year, we're on the hook for the whole cost of whatever we decide.
That's, regardless of which option you take, year four, you're on the hook for it all.
So, if we get to year four, and it's all been funded by the SAFER grant, then it potentially all goes away in year four, unless we dip into reserves.
Assuming you can't make room in the general fund budget, yes, you would have to either make the decision of cutting that engine company, or funding it through your reserves.
And I'm not a fan of funding operations through reserves. I think reserves is short-term money. I would just hate to be in a position in four years to say, now we're gonna get rid of the entire engine, because all nine positions were funded by a grant, and unless we find room in the budget, we're, we're gonna have to go dark. Option two, for me at least, says, hey, at least we have three to fund the busiest shift of the day. I, I'm not gonna vote against any of these options, if my colleagues choose a different option, because I'm not gonna vote against Engine 208. But I don't like the math up there, but in concept, I'd rather lock in three. Let's measure it. Let's test it. Let's look at response times. Let's look at mutual aid, and that'll give us good data. I'm just concerned if we fund this whole thing with the grant, we're all in, and then we're all out if it, if we can't do it in the future.
So, you're saying, Steve, that it's gonna be easier to offload three instead of all of them? If we're put, like, you're thinking worst-case scenario?
I'm thinking option two is already in the budget that we're about to approve.
Right.
So, we could theoretically keep funding three going forward.
Right. Instead of having everyone funded by the grant, and then it's gone, and then now we're, we're really low.
Let's find room in the budget.
Instead of it going like this, and like that, we're like this. I don't have any more comments. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I mean, that, I finished my thought, is all I meant to say. But like I said, there's no good options here, you know.
Well, I, I agree. I, I could go for one, or for two. I could be persuaded either way. I'm-
Yeah.
Staff, do you have any other more wisdom for us, or?
I'll just share this. I think the dilemma is, option two, you have a bigger potential financial commitment, but you do have a way to mitigate the risk a little bit more. So, even though the, the dollar amount may be more, there's more opportunity to mitigate risk.
That's a great way to put it.
But that's, but that's, how much do you, like, that's the balance.
Can I ask another question on the SAFER grant? Do we have any sense as to the awardees that actually did receive it, and their demographic?
Great, great question. We actually have pulled up four award, winning awards. We have looked at our application. We looked at their application. Frankly, some of the cities that we're looking at are far worse off financially than El Cajon. That, that could be a factor, that they're talking about browning out stations, they're talking about reducing staffing, public safety staffing, with some pretty significant structural deficits. So, you know, the good news is, you're not as bad off as they are. The bad news is, that hurts you.
I, I would say that, that's probably the reason why, is they're looking at how well-run we are, and-
But I think it's also, it's also helpful to see how they worded some things. So, I think we've learned some lessons from sort of the winning applications, of how we can make our application more competitive in this next round.
Go ahead, Steve.
Giving you some credit for a conversation we had. I think when we applied for the SAFER grant last year, it was to fund the entire thing, just like option one is. And I think you felt we didn't get the grant, because those that got the grant already had a little bit going, and the SAFER grant boosted that. And I think that was my rationale, one of my rationales for option two. Get three, and the SAFER grant says, oh, you're trying. You've made a commitment. Let's boost that for you. And I think that was a possible reason why some of those grantees got the grant.
I think it certainly makes it more competitive, because I think the goal of the grant is to get more firefighters on the street. So, you've already gotten one-third of the way there. You're just asking the feds to help with the other two-thirds. That would be an argument for that.
And that would be an argument against somebody who says, we really don't have any, any skin in the game. Can you fund it all for us?
Well, and I, I don't know that, like I said before, making a game plan based off of a grant isn't great. I don't, that's not a great option. So, yeah, I, I'd be okay with giving staff direction for option two. Because at a certain point, you know, we can't just keep striking out, striking out, striking out, year over year. If we're gonna make a move, we have to make a move. And I don't think it, I think it's disingenuous to, to just keep stringing, stringing this along. You know, we have to make some kind of a commitment, and I'd be okay with number two.
Gary?
Yeah. I think Steve made a good point, that our chances would probably be better with number two. with number two. So, uh, I think he made a compelling argument on that, so...
Sounds like we've come to a consensus.
I'm okay with, with, uh, option two.
Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I'll move that we, uh, go with option number two.
Second.
Please, Phil.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Now we'll go back to nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have one public here today on today's agenda. Item nine is for the 25, 26 annual budget, and staff will tell us about this. Hi, Clay.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. My name is Clay Shane, I'm the Finance Director for the City of El Cajon. We're here today to present the fiscal year 25, 26 proposed annual budget. Today's presentation will try to pick it up from where we left off on June 10th, including checking back in with the overall budget, closing things out on the general fund, and then discussing the wastewater fund, other city funds, capital projects, addressing any questions or discussion, and then we will secure the adoption of the 26th budget. We are still compiling the full budget document. Uh, once it's available, it will be available on the city's website at elcajon.gov/budget. Um, until it is in, available in its entirety, the same information that was presented for today's meeting will be on the website. So picking up where we left off on the 10th, we have a total proposed budget of $285.6 million. Proportionately, it's distributed about the same as we discussed then. Uh, the numbers have moved around a little bit. Uh, since then, it was a draft budget we presented, um, but nothing material, or at least not material that we won't talk about here in a minute. Authorized FTEs in this, in this plan have dropped from 422 authorized positions in FY25 to 409 total positions in FY26. The majority of that is one of the headlines in the general fund, which is, this budget proposal does not include the overhiring of 10 additional police officers. It does, however, include the three FTEs or the one-third crew of the new fire engine company. Um, it does not include any new general fund CIP funding, and it does not include any additional general fund vehicle replacement funding. When we were here on the 10th, we discussed having a budget that was out of balance by $4.2 million. Uh, we have a combination of remedies proposed, um, one, a series of cuts that we'll get to in a second, as well as the use of $1.9 million of general fund reserves. Like I said, the numbers wiggled around a little bit as we were finalizing the document. Um, in the proposed budget, we're estimating the FY26 beginning fund balance, uh, to be $60.6 million. General fund revenues totaling $101.4 million, expenditures of $103.4, and we're estimating an ending general fund fund balance of $58.7 million. On the general, excuse me, on the revenue side, uh, we're proposing a, an estimated revenue budget of $101.4 million. This is very, very close to what we discussed on the 10th. Um, there were no changes in the major revenue categories. However, referring back to this table, um, there was a little bit of movement on the categories at the bottom of this list. Total revenues we're anticipating to increase from the FY25 estimated total of $97.8 million. We expect that to grow by an additional $3.6 million to $101.4 million. On the expenditure side, that is where we see the most movement. Uh, when we were here on the 10th, we had a draft budget totaling $105.4 million. Uh, the proposed package here, uh, it totals $103.4 million. Proportionately, this has shifted around a tiny bit, but more or less, the distribution is more or less the same as presented on the 10th. This table details the growth, uh, from the 25 amended budget to the 26 proposed. Um, we have seen it grow, or we're proposing growth of $1.7 million from $101.6 million to $103.4 million. The vast majority of that increase are in the police and fire department, uh, where they have increased approximately $900 and $800,000 respectively. Um, do want to point out, there are some unusual-looking increases and decreases between the public works, engineering, and parks and rec, uh, department, or departments. Um, that's a result of the creation of the new public works department and the reorganization related to that. If you were to total those three variances, I think the change year to year is something on the order of $40,000 in total. This looks at expenditures in a slightly different way. Uh, we've simplified this presentation from the 10th to simply, uh, contrast personnel expenses against non-personnel expenses. Again, totaling $103.4 million in total. Uh, salaries, benefits, and pension obligation bond payments constitute approximately 79% of that total. So how did we get here? This budget proposal includes a number of actions taken to bring us to, well, using $1.9 million of fund balance instead of 4.2. This includes a handful of positions that were cut outright from the budget, a handful of frozen positions where we have included them as authorized positions, but we recognize that we will not have the capacity to fill them during the course of the year, and therefore they're not funded. And then we have applied a vacancy factor. Uh, the big takeaway from this particular form of adjustment is that it does represent a smaller workforce overall. Throughout the general fund, uh, there were general cuts to non-personnel costs, um, and in this category, I'm kind of thinking about things like office supplies, operating supplies, subscriptions, things like that. It's trim a little here, trim a little there. Um, we included, uh, cuts to training throughout the city. Um, one thing, uh, I think this is noteworthy, even if it's not generating a whole lot of money, when we are trying to get as much done with a smaller workforce, we need them to be as capable as possible, and that includes training. We have suspended or limited funding to a number of other funds. Uh, we'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but I am speaking about internal service funds for one, and then secondly, the general fund CIP fund, as well as the general fund's vehicle replacement fund. There was a rather lengthy list of individual, uh, cuts included in this budget proposal. I've highlighted three here just to make a couple of points. Um, one of our cuts was the elimination of the fire reserve program. I've included this or highlighted this to demonstrate that every department in the city gave a little to get us to this point. Um, some of the cuts are high-profile events, like high-profile cuts, including the elimination of AmeriCon Main Street for next year. But some of them are little, they fly under the ra, radar, and they do add up, and that includes things like the distribution of the My El Cajon Newsletter in an electronic format rather than U.S. Postal Service. So this slide, I was a little apprehensive about including this because I'm concerned about it conflicting with the previous one. This slide compares the budget, the draft budget we brought in front of council on June 10th versus what we have here today. This does not reflect the changes from FY25 to 26. I want to highlight this to demonstrate, um, the fact that every department in the general fund has been reduced from what we had on the 10th. Um, just as an example, the police department, their budget did increase $900,000 from FY25 to 26, but that's $383,000 less than what was included in the 10th's budget. As you can see, uh, the most significant, uh, change there was in engineering services, and that's the result of contracting out, uh, engineering inspection services. All in all, the total cuts from the June 10th meeting totaled the $2.1 million the city manager discussed then. Um, and that brings me to the big takeaways, or at least what I think are the big takeaways from FY25, 26 budget. And I want to, just to make sure we're all clear on this situation, but this budget does represent a structural budget deficit. This is a really, really trendy term that gets thrown around a lot, and I am using it very strictly here. And in this context, I mean that operating expenditures exceed operating revenues. Um, we rely on, uh, reserves in this budget to plug that hole, and doing that on a short-term basis, it makes sense. Long-term, it's an unsustainable model. You can kind of think about it as using the savings account to buy groceries. Additionally included in this budget is a condition that we've started discussing over the last couple of years, and it's the shifting balance in the general fund of, uh, the application of resources moving increasingly from non-safety to safety and from non-personnel to personnel. And I bring this up for a couple of reasons. One, it's becoming increasingly more difficult for departments to provide their services with less and less resources. So at some point, we'll get to a breaking point where services will begin to suffer as a result of these, this action, this direction. And secondly, should we find ourselves not able to sales tax our way out of this condition, if we don't experience the economic boom, exceed our, our expectations, uh, as far as revenue goes, there isn't a whole lot left to work with besides firefighters and police officers. And lastly, um, unfunded operations. Um, I mentioned this earlier, uh, thinking about internal service funds, we have been buying services from, uh, our internal service funds at a discount for several years, leaning on their accumulated fund balance. Um, those piggy banks are running dry, but what's more concerning to me is our general fund CIP bucket of money, as well as our vehicle replacement fund. At the end of fiscal year 26, we're anticipating the general fund CIP bucket of money to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $5.5 to $6 million. In the CIP world, that's one or two big projects, and then that piggy bank's dry. Uh, on the vehicle side, if we continue with average years replacements, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of two to four years worth of vehicle replacement still in that fund. I mention that because once those funds go dry, then we're cash-funding that activity directly out of the general fund, and at that point, you'll see fund balance decrease fairly rapidly. So at this point, I'd like to climb out from underneath the storm clouds of the general fund and maybe out into the sunshine a little bit. And to do that, I would like to introduce Autumn Reberger, our, the city's principal fiscal analyst, to bring us the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Clay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Autumn Reberger, and I am the principal fiscal analyst for the City of El Cajon. I will be completing today's presentation and discussing the non-general fund funds, beginning with the wastewater fund. The wastewater fund is the city's only enterprise fund. This fund type is used to manage a service that charges fees, in this case wastewater or sewer fees, so it pays for itself without using tax dollars. It runs like a business, but it's owned by the public. For this fiscal 2025, 26 proposed budget, we have a beginning fund balance of $57.2 million, with an anticipated revenue of $35.2 million, and those are collected from fees. The expenditures of $33 million and capital project expenditures of $23.6 million resulting in an ending fund balance of $35.8 million. Special revenue funds are used to track money the city receives for specific purposes, like a grant or a dedicated tax, so it's only spent on what it's meant for. For example, we collect a tax just for street repairs, so that money goes into a special revenue fund to make sure it's only used for streets. The top five non-multi-year special revenue funds are: the gas tax at $5.8 million, the low-moderate projects for approximately $2.9 million, Magnolia Performing Arts Center is just under $950,000, recreation special programs at approximately $800,000, and local public safety, which is right around $650,000. A debt service fund is used to set aside money to repay the city's loans or bonds. Basically, it's how we manage and track payments on our long-term debt and ensure we stay on schedule with repayments. All of this helps keep our financial commitments transparent and organized. We have one such fund, which is for our pension obligation bonds, at $9.1 million. An internal service fund is used when one part of the city provides service to another, like the city garage maintaining vehicles for all departments. It charges them to cover the costs. It helps us track those costs accurately and manage shared services efficiently. We have five internal service funds for the vehicle maintenance, vehicle replacement, self-insurance, information technology, and post-employment benefits. Capital projects fall under multi-year funds. Multi-year funds are used to manage projects or programs that span more than one budget year. This allows us to track funding and spending consistently over time or for the life of a project on an individual basis. We currently have 49 existing projects open in the system with a combined project budget of $100.7 million. In the proposed 2025, 26 fiscal year, there are six new projects being requested for $8.8 million, as well as seven project amendments at $8.3 million. If approved, this will bring the total number of active projects to 55 and a combined project budget of $117.8 million. This does include the $23.6 million from wastewater projects. This is a list of the six new proposed capital projects for $8.8 million. As the project names suggest, our focus has returned to the routine maintenance and repair of city infrastructure now that the intense activity surrounding ARPA has subsided. A tentative timeline for budget review and reporting for the upcoming fiscal year is noted here. Given the intensity of work during this budget process, we anticipate a substantial update in the quarter one report occurring in the early fall of 2025. Additionally, we have the annual pension review in the fall of 2025, as well as the five-year business plan in the late fall of 2025. We'll have the mid-year report early in 2026, and we'll be back here again for the fiscal year 2026, 27 annual budget in the spring of 2026. At the request of the city attorney, we ask that you take separate actions as each of the following entities: city council, housing authority, and successor agency. Our recommendations are: acting as the city council to adopt the following: adopting the budget, adopting the annual appropriation limit, and approving the redesignation of fund balance; then, acting as the housing authority to adopt the budget; and finally, acting as the successor agency to adopt the budget. This concludes our presentation, and we thank you for your time and consideration, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Let me see if I have questions on the council. I'll start with Gary.
Yeah, on the very first slide...
Clay?
The wa, okay, uh, the wastewater, I think it's called wastewater capital improvement? Okay, capital project expenditures at $23 million. You know, we, we've dropped our bill, beginning fund balance by about 40%. Do we have other big projects that are going on?
That, that's purposeful. Remember, we, we actually had been scheduled to do a lot of capital projects over the last three years that all went on hold because of, because of the ARPA projects.
Okay.
So those monies have been banked for these specific projects. To have, uh, $57 million as a fund balance and have fun is inappropriate unless you had a capital project specifically for them. So that, that is very purposeful.
And do you, do we, in the future, do we have a whole bunch of capital-approved projects, or does that take care of a whole bunch of them?
We'll always have capital, I mean, we have, uh, aging infrastructure, so there'll always be. So one of the responsibilities that we have is to continue to update the sewer master plan, and then to ensure that the rates that we're charging our residents are, um, sufficient to... to fulfill those master plan needs. So that's, that's always been done.
Yeah, I wouldn't want, what happened to us before is we didn't raise rates for a long, long time, and then we had to have a big raise when we're going, hey, we're running out of money here to maintain our sewers, and we don't want the sewage to come out of manhole covers like it did a few times.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle.
Thank you for the report. I see that, if I'm correct, four hundred, we went from four hundred and twenty-two FTEs to four zero nine, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we lost thirteen jobs. Did those people go part-time, or did they get completely eliminated?
There were very few people affected through these changes in totality. At this point in time, it's my understanding that no one has lost their job. They have been offered alternatives, and we're waiting on the decisions they make on whether they want to go here or there. There are a number of vacant positions in the city that need to be filled one way or another, so we were fortunate enough to move a lot of those eliminated positions into vacant positions.
Okay. Because I just want, I just think it's important that as we, as a council, as we discuss, you know, budgets, that some of this has to impact some of the employees. And I know that I never wanted to eliminate jobs or someone lose their job because we couldn't cut from something else. That's all I have right now.
I'll start with Phil and work our way down.
Well, thank you, Clay, and thank you to all of the people involved in all the departments for making the cuts and tightening their belt. This is my curiosity, the expenditures that included the pension obligation bonds, what percentage are we, can you go to that slide? It was the pie graph. Keep going forward. There we go. Salaries, benefits, and pension obligation bonds account for seventy-nine percent of our general fund expenditures. What percentage of that is our pension obligation bonds? Do you know?
The total citywide obligation for the POBs is about nine point one million dollars. Of that, the general fund pays, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of eight point six or eight point eight million of it.
Okay, eight million annually?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so rough numbers, eight to ten percent, somewhere around there? Okay. This is more of a high-level question, so from my understanding, the presentation is, you know, we've cut all we can cut with regard to non-emergency, non-police and fire personnel. If we have to cut more, we're, and this, you know, the revenues don't come in, the next step is police and fire, is that what we're, is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, probably. I'm going to steal Mr. Shane's name for this graph. This is referred to as Pac-Man. And Pac-Man continues, the Pac-Man is the personnel, and they continue to eat everything else. At some point, there's no more to eat, and in order to fulfill its, its nutritional needs, it'll have to start eating itself.
Right.
The public safety, non-public safety graph looks very similar to this.
Yeah.
In terms of expenditures too. So at, at some point, there's just nowhere else to go, unless you think, do things like eliminate parks and recreation. But as you remember it from the, the town halls that we did for, for Measure J, you could get rid of all the departments, and that still doesn't make up some bigger, the big differences coming up.
So, and, and at least this is my perspective, you know, we have general fund reserves, and we have the different buckets for economic downturns, and I think we made that commitment to, that's why we have general fund reserves, is to weather the storm during these economic downturns. I guess the next iteration in this scenario would be, at what point do we either run out or stop dipping into those reserves? And you don't have to weigh in, you can if you want. The, the second question would be, if the decline in sales tax revenue continues, have we played out scenarios to say, what are we going to cut? When are we going to cut it? Why are we making those cuts? And kind of come up with a game plan so it's not a surprise in the future? We can already go through that mental game to say, okay, if our revenue continues in decline by five percent over the next five years, or twenty percent over the next three years, come up with some scenarios to say, this is what we would do, this is when these buckets would run out. Do you want to get to that point? Does that make sense? Kind of projecting?
You, you, as a city council, are far ahead of the curve, because when we were doing the analysis related to Measure J, you kind of ran through those scenarios.
Oh, right.
And so, a lot of that exercise has already occurred, and so we would probably dust that off and see, okay, where, where, what did we suggest we would cut if we had to go thirteen million dollars down? Well, now we have to go five million dollars down, so of that thirteen million, where would we cut? So we've kind of done that, you've done that work already, that would be helpful. You know, recessions are cyclical, we've been in a two-year decline in sales tax. We are actually projecting sales tax to increase over the last year, not at the same rate we had wanted to. So we're hoping that we're going to see the end of the cycle, so it's probably premature to say, you know, let's start cutting now, but I think the fact that you guys have already done that work puts us far ahead of most cities.
At least from my perspective, I can't speak for my council members, but I'm a firm believer in, you know, the general fund reserve is taxpayer dollars, you know, it, it is all the taxpayers, and I would like it to, of course, I would like to see that be spent on something big that can last for decades in the future, but at the end of the day, to Michelle's point, we have to worry about what's in front of us right now, and I'd be committed to continuing to use those tax dollars in reserve to avoid cutting jobs, I mean, or cutting entire departments, you know, and we've already done that once, but I'd, I'd like to reaffirm my commitment to that, because especially if, you know, we're seeing the decline stop and maybe an upward trend in sales tax, or at least a leveling off to go back up, I don't want to, to lose any personnel, especially good personnel that we've had for a long time, if we're, if we think that we're coming out of the end of this, so.
I have a question. Thank you for numbering the slides, it helps. Let's go back to the slide, I didn't write down the number, I'm sorry, on the full-time equivalent. I'll get used to it now that I know where to look for it.
That's hilarious.
So let's go back to fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, and we have FT, full-time equivalents of four oh four. And then we said as a council, hey, let's go get some of those COVID police officers who are being released by their agencies, let's over-hire temporarily by ten, so that four twenty-one, beginning in twenty-two, twenty-three, really is a dotted line, because, because that four twenty-one, ten of those were funded by reserves, and the rest were funded by the general fund income. You following me?
Yeah, you could say that.
Okay. So we always knew that the four twenty-one, four twenty-two, those ten positions were always going to be funded by reserves, and we couldn't do it forever. So the, the drop from four twenty-two to four oh nine really is the end of that era, the end of the ten person over-hire using reserves. So it's really going, to me, from four twelve to four oh nine. Now, where are those three? Ironically, they're in the police department, mostly. I think the records department is losing two and a half jobs, if I saw that.
I think those are frozen positions.
Okay.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, it's a reduction in headcount.
That's correct.
Due to vacancies or, or whatever. And yet that records department budget, it's going up twenty-seven percent. And I asked the general, the city manager, he said, well, it's actually, we're having to change software to stop band-aiding our records retention and program of things. The cost of government is getting more expensive than what sales tax is providing us to cover those costs. So I'm not freaking about, freaking out about from four twenty-two down to four oh nine. It was always going to be ten high for the three years that it was shown, funded by reserves. We can't fund that for reserves any longer. Now, can I talk about capital projects versus operating budget? Capital projects are pretty much funded by grants, correct? Not from the sales tax, not from property tax, not from fees. They're funded by SADAG grants, by state grants, by SP one grants. So if we don't get those grants, it just means we don't do that project. Am I thinking right?
I think you're on the right track. I would say our biggest funders of routine capital projects is wastewater fees to maintain the wastewater system. We also get a considerable amount of money from transnet, RMRA, gas tax, things like that, that is restricted for transportation, streets, byways, sidewalks, things like that. Those, without question, are the biggest players in the CIP program overall. However, there are a number of city facilities that there are no alternative funding sources for, recreation center, for example. There may be grants available for that, but absent a grant opportunity, that typically is funded by the general fund.
And, and we choose whether we want to, to fix the roof using general fund money or put off fixing the roof for another year.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the capital side. I'm not, if we don't get the money, we don't get the money, we don't do the project. If we get ninety-five percent of, of the grant money, we do ninety-five percent of the projects. So I'm not freaking out about service cuts, because that's more cost to repair a road, cost to fix an underground pipe, things like that. The wastewater is a different fund, I agree, the, the reserve has been fifty-eight million, we've done three years' worth of piling up on that reserve because we haven't done the projects, I get it. Now let's talk about general fund for a second. This is the operations of the city, the services. I think we're okay. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Ortiz, that this is why we have reserves, to, to carry us through. When you get laid off from a job, you have savings, hopefully, you are fortunate enough to put money away beyond what you need day to day, you have savings to carry you through until you get your next job and resume that level of income. That's the analogy that I'm using here. We're having to dip into savings a little bit until our earnings get back to where we want them to be. Fortunately, we don't have to dip into savings too much, two to, about two million dollars this year. And if we have to do that for three years, I'm okay taking six million dollars out of a fifty-eight million dollar balance. That's why the taxpayers told us, save money so you don't have to cut services. And we're very fortunate to be able to do that. There are a couple of questions on a couple of the funds, the expenditure side. Transnet went from an estimated two point five million in spending to twenty-three point seven million in spending. The transnet capital project fund.
I'm assuming you're looking at page B four?
B eight.
B eight, okay. That's a little misleading, that, there probably was that much budget in twenty-five. The amount we're showing there is what was expended as of period ten FY twenty-five, and any remaining budget is shifted forward into twenty-six.
So you're saying a carryover could explain this?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, if we're looking that closely, on the funds that are subject to that scenario, there's a little asterisk next to them, and it ties to the footnote, identifying those as multi-year funds.
Sounds good. Other post-employment benefits, I talked to the city manager, if you want to jump in, Clay, you can jump in, went from eight hundred and sixty thousand to ten point one million. My understanding is this is just a reclassification, taking money out of payroll and putting it in a separate line for visibility, is that correct? It's such a big jump, I should know why.
Well, you're absolutely on the right track. We typically pay our UAL contribution to CalPERS at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we have traditionally used our payroll clearing fund for that purpose. We were concerned that that does not give us the visibility and the accountability by having it, I hate to express it this way, but sort of in a fund that's off the radar. So we made the move in twenty-five for the first time to make that activity part of the budgeted activity of that fund, so that is highly visible, and we're being held accountable for those monies.
Okay, that helps do that. That's all the questions I have, thank you for an excellent presentation. Down at another agency that I am at, they have forty-two slides. I say if you have forty-two slides, that's a minute of a slide, and I'm telling you, we are there for forty-two slides, so thank you for keeping it short.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to congratulate staff, the management, yourself, and our city manager, assistant city manager, for kind of having a crystal ball in anticipating this latest recession by not filling vacancies. And it makes it a lot easier for us, because we don't have to lay off a bunch of people. I think you guys kind of saw this coming, and you said, well, let's not rehire, you know, this person that just retired or, or left for some reason. And, you know, that's, that's a special ability that not all cities have, and not all city staffs have. So I, I do appreciate that, seeing things coming or, you know, kind of doing, taking this analysis of what risk there is of a recession coming up. So again, thank you all.
Michelle?
I don't know if this can be answered by you or by city manager and staff. What I'd like to know is, what are our efforts to seek out new revenue sources or development projects to bring in more money? Not necessarily just getting any business in to fill a space or a building, but those businesses that actually bring people in and bring in the revenue that we need. I feel like sometimes, I know we have a lot of development projects in the works, but I, I want to make sure that what we're bringing in, and this is something that I need from staff, is what we're bringing in, are they going to be good, strong revenue sources? Or do we need to go out and start looking for the more alternative sources that some of the other cities have gone to, to bring in more revenue? Because we, we have an issue, we're not getting the sales tax in, so we're not getting the money in that necessarily keeps us more than flush for our expenses coming out. And so, just like a household, one of us has to get a second job. And so that's what I'm kind of looking at, is what are we doing, what are our efforts, and what are the possibilities of bringing in revenue sources that will bring us the money and not just filling buildings?
I, I can answer that, so, but it'll help me understand, what do you mean by alternative revenue sources, like business-to-business, or?
Well, I mean, okay, just to be transparent, some of the other cities have gone to dispensaries or to grow farms. Now, this has come up in discussion in several times, but these are revenue sources that other cities have used, and it's always a tough topic, because the public, you know, is split on that perception. However, we also are in a city that we have a lot of services, we have a lot of benefits that we have, and we need to fund those, whether it's police and fire, you know, public safety, or whether it's, you know, getting engineers and planning, or whatever it is. If we're not bringing in the money, someone's got to get a second job, and this is what I'm talking about. We may have to step out of our current frame of mind of discounting, whether it be marijuana or whether it be, I don't know, race cars, I don't, something, but just looking at other alternatives other than just building, filling buildings.
Graham?
From an economic, yes, sir.
I, I just want to caution, it's going to be a long night, and this could be a long discussion, it might be better we have a workshop or, or bring back a specific guy for this, but go ahead.
Well, certainly, I'll just respond to this. From an economic development perspective, we're doing a couple of things. One is, we're focusing on Parkway Plaza, as you know. In fact, you adopted an agreement today to help explore that. I think by bringing New City America in to help run our downtown P bid, that will be pretty significant, because if we can get the right mix and the right assessment, then that will hopefully turn the tide in getting some residential development into the downtown. That is primary needed in our downtown. The challenge, and, and the mayor actually received some questions from a reporter about this, is why isn't the city developing more housing? Cities don't develop housing. Cities don't develop housing. We encourage housing. In fact, most of our zoning allows for some sort of mixed-use development already. If the market's not there, the market's not there. The City of El Cajon, decisions that were made long before the city council ever was even contemplating, the city council, said, we are going to build as many apartments as we possibly can, for whatever reason. And that, that decision continues to hamstring us year after year after year. The inclusion of more affordable housing in our community should be the last thing we should ever consider. We should be looking for high-end housing. I hate to be blunt about it, because we need more affordable housing in the region. Our neighboring cities need to provide more affordable housing. We have done our share. But when our, when we have so much affordable housing, housing developers are scared to develop in El Cajon, because they cannot get the revenue or the rents needed to make a project pencil. Mr. Goble worked with staff on the MTS project. Even with some pretty significant government subsidies, a pretty reputable housing developer, affordable housing developer, could not get that project a pencil. At the end of the day, it came down to, we can't charge enough for rent in our community. So that's got to be fixed. We're hoping that some resurgence in the downtown will help shift some of those financial dynamics. When it comes to alternative funding, council members, that's in your court, that's not in our court, that's for you to direct us. So we would entertain opportunities to explore that, but that needs to come to us from the council.
Absolutely agree. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So what do you propose? Anybody want to make a, I kind of like to wait for Gary to come back, so I'm stalling for time for a second. Let's just wait for him to come back. But if anybody, now's a good time to flesh out any ideas that you all have. I think staff has done a great job of not spending the savings we've had for the past several years, and that allows us to have a higher reserve, which means we have a softer landing, meaning we don't have a lot of people. If you would have spent the money to create more positions, we would be talking about layoffs today.
That's the good thing about this. We, you know, for 20-plus years, we've always had a unified city council with the idea that we needed to not live beyond our means. So I've always been proud of that.
And that you bank savings means we have a soft landing, which means we might not get as many projects done, but we don't have to cut services, meaning people who provide the services.
I also agree with you that you can be miserly at some point where you don't use your savings for, in analogy, put the new roof on the house. You know, you don't live with a leaky roof when you've got the money in the bank to fix it. So I think you're right with that.
Are you looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion. Thank you.
I will move that, acting as a city council, we adopt the resolution of the fiscal year 2025-26 annual budget.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I will move that we adopt the resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriations limit for 25-26. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I will move that we adopt the resolution approving the designation of general fund balances.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Acting as a Housing Authority Board of Directors, that we adopt the resolution of the Housing Authority budget for 25-26.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
And acting as a successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, that we approve the 25-26 budget.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Just asking the audience, is anybody here from La Maestra for their item? Let's get to yours next. So you've been here a long time, and we may have some time. I'm trying to find, I think it's under Activities.
Under 19, sir.
19? Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. Thank you. So we have a joint council member report on today's agenda. I18 is from Councilmember Goble and myself. Just to give you a little bit of background, we have ordinances that talk about the amount of window space that can be covered. And there's very good reasons why you don't want liquor stores and restaurants and grocery stores not to be completely covered, because the police have to be able to see inside what's happening. Unfortunately, unintended consequences, we have a situation now where clinics in town, we're getting more of these clinics, especially federally qualified health clinics, are seeing patients, especially psychiatric patients and some other sensitive areas, where their windows are required to be 100% covered, or not to be 100% covered, and they'd like them to be, because of HIPAA violations. And so Steve and I thought that it might be worth having a discussion about it and starting the ball rolling, and these folks are from La Maestra, they're going to tell us what they think. And Steve, did you have anything else to say before we?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing, I think this came up, is because the applicant has purchased a property which used to be a retail-fronting property on the edge of East Main Street, and so it's just 20, 25 feet away from the curb line. And that's a little different than an office that is 50, 60 feet behind the curb line.
So before we get into this, would you like to say anything about your business and why you're here?
Yes. My name is Tom with La Maestra Community Health Centers, and we are a federally qualified health center. We serve communities all across San Diego. We have six sites in El Cajon. We've served in El Cajon for 15 years now. And we do handle sensitive medical information every single day. That's medical and dental information. And we are subject to federal HIPAA guidelines, as well as state guidelines, and the state guidelines are actually more strict than the federal guidelines. But we are required to maintain very strict privacy requirements, privacy standards. And so allowing patients to be seen through an uncovered window really creates a serious risk of exposure, of unauthorized exposure to patient information, whether that's patients are in, patients being in the waiting area, or patients being in the check-in area, or even patients being seen during a medical or dental exam. And so for this reason, we're asking for a modification that allows us to screen or cover 100% of our windows in order to remain compliant with the law and with best practices in healthcare.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's a fantastic idea. Maybe, is there any other organizations or businesses or help, you know, skilled nursing facilities that are subject to the, to this, that we would need to make exceptions for?
I think that's what the agenda item would do, is direct us to do some analysis, because I'm not quite sure.
Not all, not just La Maestra, but all of it.
Yeah, because this could apply, this could end up having some unintended consequences beyond what sounds reasonable right now. So the thought would be, if council wanted to give us some direction, we would bring back an analysis of how many properties this would affect, what are the pros, what are the cons, what are the consequences? And then based on that analysis, the council can then direct us to take that back to the Planning Commission to reconsider that.
Great. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I think this is a great idea. My feeling is, we could, shouldn't we be able to make an amendment to the current ordinance or the zoning code to include hearing, dental, medical, psychological?
That was, that was my thought, and bringing this forward, that we would now pass it off to staff who would look at all those options and come back to with what's reasonable and what's doable.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because nobody, you know, you may go to the dentist, and maybe you don't want your neighbor to know you went to that particular dentist. Where is this location going in at? Just curious.
The property in question is 1242, 1246, and 1248 East Main Street. It's a plaza with three buildings that we've recently occupied, and we've converted them to medical and dental sites. Our other site is just right across the parking lot at 181 Ria.
Right.
It's a little bit west of the Awaken Church.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
And we do see, you know, sensitive patients with sensitive issues, mental health, substance use, domestic abuse, where their privacy is really, really does need to be protected. And so we really want to preserve the dignity as well as the privacy of patients. You know, it's not an extreme mask where, you know, the first floor being covered. We do have that in all of our other sites where it is covered, the window coverings. So we're just asking for just privacy for our patients.
Well, so the process will be, if the council votes to ask the staff to come back with analysis, we'll set another date to come back for the final vote here. So.
Sounds good.
And, or alternatively, so there's two, there's two options you can go. One is, you give us some direction to analyze this and bring it back to the council. If the council, based on the analysis, will then give direction to the Planning Commission. The alternative is, you could just direct us to prepare analysis and take that to the Planning Commission, and you don't see it until the Planning Commission has already made a recommendation based on staff's analysis. So the question is, do you want to see it first before Planning Commission, or do you want to?
It would save time just to go right to the Planning Commission, right?
Yeah, unless they don't like the direction that you may want to go.
Then they can, then they can appeal and bring it back.
That's correct.
Yeah. I, I'm, well, thank you for coming. Let me, we're going to talk about the logistics up here, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if there's any speaker cards on this item.
No other speaker cards, sir.
Thank you, folks. Okay.
Well, I think there's some compelling reasons why we should move forward on this, at least give it back, give it to staff and find out any good and bad points of this. So unless my fellow council members have anything to say, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, the one thing I would like to say is that I would prefer to have a go from here, from here to the Planning Commission, instead of another stop here, and then to the Planning Commission, just to expedite this, because these things can go forever.
That sounds good to me. That'll be my motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Wonderful. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to take a quick break. There's a, there's a whole section where I have to read to you for a long time. So we'll take a quick break and come back and pop your popcorn, get ready for this, it's going to be an exciting show.
Nobody would say anything. Wait. Everybody here is going to speak? The whole public? I'm leaving. Jen has to go home.
Okay. What did I, what have I missed? We've been so, I've never been.
We're on a target. You've got to do 12 and 30, and then your, your council.
So go to 12 now? I'm going to wait for them. We've made more, more changes to this agenda than any I've ever had. But I hate to make, I hate to make people wait when.
This is the last council meeting of the fiscal year.
Ooh, really?
It's a big deal. At least for us. Staff, that's what you think about.
It's, sorry, is the last council meeting of the fiscal year? Well, wonderful.
Congratulations, y'all.
Excuse me, sir.
Do you do a school board, or is there one board meeting a month? I didn't know that.
Who does that?
The school board. I should tell you this, but Escaneda does a weekly council. A weekly? They usually have one of their weeks kind of more of a workshop-y, book or sleeve kind of a thing, but it always felt like it never turned into a, it never ends, it's tough. That seems excessive. Yeah, they can do a lot of them. It's like, it's like lawmakers in California since they're full-time, they just come up with stuff. Yeah, that seems dangerous. Versus Texas, they just focus on the basics. Yeah, Idaho, they're in session for three months, I think.
Okay, we're back, moving forward. Item 12 is to amend the CalPERS contract with an introduction of an ordinance. Deputy City Manager Marisol Thorne, I'm sorry, I think that is supposed to be our human resources, no, Deputy City Manager.
Yes.
I keep forgetting you. Congratulations. Marisol will tell us all about this. Take my foot out of my mouth.
No, it's good. So this is part two of a three-part process for a CalPERS contract amendment. As you recall, in May, I brought forth a resolution for executive management for police, which is only the chief, and that was a resolution which expressed an agreement that the chief would pay an additional 1% into CalPERS. So that allowed us to initiate the contract amendment with CalPERS. And so now the resolution before you, as well as the ordinance, is the initiation of that process, and upon adoption, then we'll, we're able to move forward with the changes to the contract. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Marisol? Any speaker cards for this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, back to council.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving its intent, our intention to amend. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving its intent, our intention to amend the contract between the City of El Cajon and the Board of Administration of CalPERS, and introduce for first reading the ordinance in order, amending that contract between the city and CalPERS.
Second.
Okay, let's vote at this point.
Motion carries by unanimous vote, and the title of the ordinance is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of El Cajon Approving an Amendment to the Contract Between the City of El Cajon and the Board of Administration, California Public Employees Retirement Systems."
Thank you. Our last administrative report, I'm 13, is for the compensation of executive and unrepresented employees, A29. City Attorney and City Manager, Deputy City Manager Marisol Thorne, will tell us about this.
Thank you. So city council policy A29 is a document that directs staff on salary and benefits for all unrepresented classifications within the city, and as such, we are bringing it forth. It's only a one-year document, and this year, we are recommending a 3% cost of living for all staff under this document, except for the police chief. Police chief, we are representing, we are proposing a 4.5% increase, which is the same as the management group, so that keeps the chief in line with his management group. We are also proposing a change in cafeteria allotment effective January of 2026 for $1,700 a month. That aligns with the mid-management group. Along with this agenda item, we are also bringing forth contract amendments for both the city manager and the city attorney, both reflecting a 3% cost of living increase.
Thank you, Marisol. First, I need to state that California law requires that prior to taking final action on the salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of what are known as local agency executives, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for such a final action. A local agency executive includes any employee of the city who is not subject to the Myers-Millis-Brown Act, and who is the city manager, the assistant city manager, department head, or whose position is held by an employment contract which includes the city attorney. So for the purposes of disclosure, this report includes action on salaries and compensation in the form of fringe benefits for the following local agency executives: City Manager Graham Mitchell, City Attorney Morgan Foley, Assistant City Manager Vince DiMaggio, Deputy City Manager Marisol Thorne, City Clerk Angela Cortez, Director of Community Development Anthony Schut, Director of Engineering Yasmin Ariano, Director of Finance City Treasurer Clay Shone, Director of Information Technology Sarah Diaz, Director of Parks and Recreation Adam Tronod, Director of Public Works David Richards, and Police Chief Jeremiah Larson. Now for the proposed changes. First, with the exception of the police chief, it is proposed that each of these employees receive the cost of benefit, the cost of living benefit of 3%. For police chief, a cost of living increase of 4.5%, in line with the police management group. These increases are effective as of June 21st, 2025. The following are proposed market adjustments for these employees: an additional 5.5% for the city clerk, an additional 3% for the director of public works. Second, it is also proposed that each of these employees receive a monthly cafeteria plan allotment of $1,700, an increase of $150 per month, beginning in January of 2026. This concludes the summary of proposed changes to salaries and compensation, the form of fringe benefits, to the city's executives, as is required by law. Now, before we move along, is there a report from the city manager on this matter?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Richel. Next, I would like to ask the city council if you have any discussion before we ask for comments from the public. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
No speaker cards, sir.
I'll bring it back to the city council.
Move adoption regarding the changes to city council policy A29 described in the staff report and reflected in the set attachments, and adopt the resolution to approve amendments to the employment contracts as the city attorney, city manager, and authorize the mayor to execute those amendments substantially in the forms as presented.
All right, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
We have no commission reports on today's agenda. Item 14 is my active report, which is as reported. Now we're at the activities reports for council members. Councilmember Goble, as reported. Mayor Protem Kendrick.
I have to add a couple of things. I had a meeting with Donnie D. from the Rescue Mission on June 18th, and let's see, I got one more here. I had a meeting yesterday with Jose Pescado, a board member at a charter school in El Cajon.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mitchell.
As reported.
Councilmember Ortiz. There are no general information items and no first readings of ordinances on today's report. We have a second reading and adoption of ordinances on today's agenda. Item 20 is through the establishment of procedures for the creation of community benefits districts in El Cajon. I will ask our city clerk to read the title, but first, Angela, any speaker cards for this item?
We have no speaker cards, sir.
Then would you please read the title?
The title reads, "An Ordinance to Add Chapter 2.90 to Title II of the El Cajon Municipal Code to Establish Procedures for the Establishment of Community Benefit Districts in the City of El Cajon."
Looking for a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
We have already done closed session, so this brings us to the adjournment of the regular joint meeting of the El Cajon City Council, El Cajon Housing Authority Successor Agency to the El Cajon Redevelopment Agency, held this 24th day of June 2025. It is adjourned until Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 3 o'clock PM. Thank you all very much. Another one in the books.[1705.42]